We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good morning. That's October 30th. It is 10 o'clock and all three county commissioners are here. And we will move to consents and approvals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. We have eight exonerations for 5,843.90 minutes for October 23rd, 2019, and the Board of Assessment Appeals for the same date. General County Fund vouchers, 65,674.69, Coal Severance, 126.99, 911, 132.82, Mason Dixon Park, 666.60, Assessor's Valuation, 3,667.57, Purchasing Card Vouchers, General County Fund, 45,984.97, Magistrate Court, 78.51, 911, 149.60, Home Confinement, 244.27, Mason Dixon Park, 712.91, Assessor's Valuation, 512.01, for a voucher total of $117,950.94. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, the Mon County Planning Commission, Montague County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, the Abandoned and Deliberated Enforcement Agency, the Decker's Creek PSD, and the Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board. Fiduciary orders for October 30th, 2019.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then you have a separate.
We also have a separate petition for removal of an executive trix in the estate of Jeffrey Scott Loretta.
I move that we refer that to a fiduciary commissioner.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we have one more issue that we discussed in work session this week, and that's regarding the Scotchville case. And we wanted to set parameters for the expenses incurred by our fiduciary commissioner. As we moved to appoint a fiduciary commissioner, but due to this case having dragged on so long, the county is, the way it is now, we'd have to go out and get both sides to do a $500 deposit to get the process moving, which we think was going to further delay the process and fighting over who's going to pay. So the county is willing to, well, I move that the county establish a limit not to exceed $1,000 for that, that we would absorb those costs.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? I'm against. Two, one passes. Okay. Good. Introduction of new employees. Director James Smith has Destiny Harris. Come on down. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. That's quite all right. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Destiny Harris. She's starting this Friday, November 1st. Probation telecommunicator, full-time position. Her father was actually one of the first 911 dispatchers hired here in Montague County many years ago. So we're glad to see that she's following in those footsteps.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for an announcement, please do not call 911 to find out when the Halloween time starts. I know you're already getting them.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Forrest Wyon. He is our new Executive Director of Montague EMS. If you'd like to come down, introduce yourself and say whatever you'd like to say. We're very proud to have you.
Thank you. Thank you. I am the new Executive Director for the Montague EMS, which is the new joint venture between WVU Hospitals and Mon Health, as you all are well aware. Super excited. I think we have a ton of opportunity with the collaboration between two health, two competing health systems to come together for sort of the greater good. And I think there's a ton of opportunity. Still doing a bunch of merging of the two cultures right now, and a lot of opportunities. Look forward to working with you all and how best we can serve the folks of Mon County.
Well, welcome. This has been in effect since July, and I've had Northmont compliments. Forrest used to work in Mon County. I'm glad we have him back.
Oh.
He originally worked for Mon EMS, so glad that we can keep West Virginia talent in West Virginia.
Thank you.
So welcome, and we're looking forward to any way that we can work with you. But you guys are off to a good start.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And possibly maybe every once every six months, if you could just come back and just give us an update or...
Well, we had, when we, when that group formed, they had agreed to, Renetta, was it quarterly or semi-annual reporting?
That's what I don't think.
Semi-annual.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jimmy can, yeah, semi-annual, so that...
That would be great.
That's already been agreed to, so kind of the statistics on response times and stuff like that is what we usually talk about, and anything else pertaining to, you know, your metrics of how well you're performing.
Absolutely. And we'll get, and I'll present some data, but if there's other things that you all would like to know, please let me know, and we'll get to it as quickly as we can.
Jimmy can kind of get you, inform you on what we've talked about in the past and things we're interested in.
Awesome. Great.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate you being here. Okay.
He's got, Mark Ralston has a new employee.
Oh, that's right.
Sheriff's Department.
I do apologize. You did give that to me.
We were a late addition. I apologize for that. I'd like to introduce Ryan Taylor. The sheriff seeks your approval on his appointment to begin November 1st as a full-time court security officer. Ryan just informed me too that he used to be his guidance.
Yes. Once I looked up, about five years ago.
And he comes to us from Lakeview Fitness, where he's a fitness trainer the past 10 years.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome. Glad to see you again.
Thank you.
Looking to work with you. Is there anyone else before I move on? Okay. Okay, we now have a resolution for the Industrial Access Road Grant Program Chaplain Hill Business Park. I know, do you want to read the resolution? And I know we have Rocky Genola here. Do you want him to explain?
Yeah, I'd like to ask our Development Authority Council, Rocky Genola, come up and explain the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. The request is before the county commission is part of the State Industrial Access Road Grant Program. If you recall, which I'm sure you won't, because I didn't either, this initial application approval was in fiscal '18 for the final segment of the Industrial Access Road at Myland Park at Chaplain Hill Business Park. That program granted our, or approved our grant application for fiscal year '18. Construction, because of delays with, which will surprise you, the DOH approvals and confirmations, we received final approval this July and began construction. During that time period, we ran into a couple of issues. One, there were voids in, there was a cut and fill for the extension of the access road. And there were voids in the fill where that was being taken for the access road construction. As a result of that, the balancing of the site was off. In order to balance the site and get sufficient material to complete the road, we had to take the site down an additional two and a half feet. When we took it down about 20 inches, we hit an unknown coal seam. And the core samples, the coal seam was an abandoned outcrop of the old strip job, and it literally went between the core sample, the core drillings, except for one. And the material on that was more shale than anything, so they didn't view it as a concern. So in order to actually make the site and the road compliant with the DOH, they had to remove that material and reconstruct a portion of the road. Additionally, the engineers on the project had a calculation error in the actual asphalt quantities for the road, which resulted in a change order from the contractor. That change was about $78,000. The additional fill and cut that was needed for the road, there was an additional $27,800. So give or take a few dollars, we're right around $107,000. In our fiscal year 2018 application, our justification and actual investment on the 10-to-1 ratio was $5,800,000 and some odd thousand dollars. So from a qualification standpoint, we are within the 10-to-1 ratio for $108,000 with the initial. That doesn't even include the development of the eight acres that it's opening up. This is not a new application. This is a request through the Development Office for additional funds. The reason that we're before you is because the county commission has to approve those additional funds. Those will come out of fiscal 2020 for the IAR grant program. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that this will lower the amount available for the county from $400,000 to $292,000. Currently, there are no applications in to the Department of Highways or Commerce for access road funds this year. The Development Authority hopes to have another request in to open up some additional acreage. I will tell you from doing six or eight of these grants over my career, it is every bit of a four-to-six-month process to get everything that the Department of Highways and the Department of Commerce requires for these projects. So unless someone really would come forward sometime between now and the end of January, it would hustle them to get it in, because the application deadline is actually towards the end of April. They can stretch it to the end of June, but there are some issues with that. So again, this is not a new application. It's a request for an extension of our 2018 application, but it does come out of the IAR available funds for the county for fiscal 2020.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the explanation. I do appreciate it.
Complete explanation, Rocky. And I move that we approve?
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you. Opening request for proposals, 2020 MCC IT 01.
So I'm assuming this one might have the parts in the same folder?
It is. Trust me with the numbers. Okay, what do we have? Request for proposal? Yes.
So we're doing, we're just opening the financial proposal now?
You're going to open the technical proposal.
Technical response from Mon County.
Okay, so I have the technical response from... Make sure I get their names straight. Data center equipment installation training with data protection and disaster recovery managed, Maven Spire Inc.
Maven Spire.
I wasn't sure that was their whole, okay, they just put the name, Maven Spire, at the end of all that.
Maven Spire Incorporated.
Okay. You have your...
Yes, mine is from the AEC Group.
AEC?
AEC.
Okay.
Technology, AEC Group Technology Solutions.
Right.
And there's three copies of a technical proposal. Assuming we'll be forwarding these to our IT staff.
Yes.
To evaluate both of them.
I'm also an EC, so it's the same thing. Yeah, so we got two, we have two, just to verify.
Yeah. And then do you want to make the financial amount?
These are the technical proposals and financials on these.
No. I didn't think I saw.
You're supposed to separate that.
Yeah, so it should have the financial response from AEC Group.
I'll have to go back to, I think it's $328,000.
What was the amount?
He's verifying the numbers.
$359,900.
Okay, so what you'll do is you'll refer those to our IT coordinator?
Right.
Yes.
And he will review the technical proposals first and score them, and then we will go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. They've now been opened and both have been accepted to be looked at. Okay, at this time, we will... Do you have to have a motion to do that? Okay.
Motion to refer these to our IT staff for technical evaluation.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The request for proposals have been referred. Okay, at this time, I have comments from the public. You have four minutes. Please state your name and come on up. Thrilled to hear from you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Bruffy with Mountain Line Transit Authority. I presented to Renetta a letter to you all requesting formally that your permission for the authority to place our property tax levy renewal on the 2020 primary ballot without any change in the levy rates currently in place. I'm requesting this issue be placed before the voters for approval of a four-year continuation of funding running from July 1st, 2021, when the current levy expires, through June 30 of 2025. The timing of the ballot initiative is critical to allow continuity in capital and operational planning in fiscal years 2020 and 2021. A decision by the voters in May 2020 primary will allow the authority to properly budget for future fiscal years without an interruption in budget planning, including service hours and bus purchases. I also wanted to give you just an update of the results of the levy funding and what we've done to date through the first three years of funding. We've purchased and put in operation 11 new buses costing $1.1 million. We've ordered an additional six buses valued at $2.5 million. For a total bus purchase of $3.6 million, 1.5 of that is levy funding matched by 2.1, almost 2.2 million in federal funds. We've added new and expanded service equalling 18,962 hours of new service. That's a 33% increase in service hours over the 56,744 that were in place on June 30th of 2016. And of course, the levy was approved in 2016. Fiscal year 2018 service hours totaled 75,706 hours out there on the streets. We've added an additional 566,000 miles of service, an increase of 57% over pre-levy service numbers. We're now covering 1.5 million miles per year through our service, and we've continued, in addition, to fund services that were previously funded through Coal Severance to the total of $1.2 million. Some of the highlights of the services that we've added and increased, we've provided service frequencies increased on selected runs. We've extended evening and weekend hours significantly Saturday and Sunday. And we've expanded to new hours, including the western end of the county, Wadestown. We now also serve new areas such as Suncrest Town Center, Fort Pierpont, and Westridge Myland Park. Those are just some of the highlights, but of course, at any time, if the commission or any of the public has questions about how we're using those levy funds, we'd be more than happy to talk with them and provide that kind of information. And I appreciate the opportunity to present this information to you and make the request for the levy timing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Good morning, Ella.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Ella Ballane. I'm the Executive Director for the Mon River Trails Conservancy, and today I'm representing the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Facilities Levy Group. I also would like to make the request, kind of following the details that Dave Bruffy just explained, the, how to have this levy and all community levies put on the primary ballot in 2020. And our organization or our group is a little different. We have our, our levy is a combination of multiple agencies and organizations, and we're still working out the details, but plan to submit a levy to you for that primary ballot if it is approved today. And we have seen significant dependence on this regarding the rail trails. That levy that is funding us currently has supported our routine maintenance operations and has kept the 48 miles of rail trail open and well-maintained for the last three years. We've been able to replace aging equipment that had been in disrepair and was having a hard time keeping that the trail maintained because of that. And we've also seen, because of having secure routine maintenance funding, the opening of neighborhood connections to our rail trails, new amenities put in. The Greenmont pedestrian walk-in bike bridge was put in in Morgantown. We have new restrooms in Preston County. We've seen the opening of the rail trail into Pennsylvania in the past three years, so a significant increase in trail use, and we appreciate the fact that that was a successful levy that was passed in 2016. We would like to say that that's a precedent and kind of a show of success of having it on a primary ballot. We'd like to repeat that effort in 2020. We also like to have it submitted for that time because it helps us plan our budgets and our capital projects, knowing whether or not it's going to be secured funding or whether we're going to have to come up with routine maintenance costs and try to make up the difference. So it's an important timing for us to see it on the primary ballot. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like, oh, great. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Meredith Hardery. I'm a board member with the Morgantown Public Library System, and I am here also to request that the levy be placed on the primary ballot on May 12th. The library is an exciting place to be right now, and we're really looking forward to keep momentum going. The levy would help with increased programming at all the libraries. This month with the past library, we were actually able to host 72 community events across the library. The levy will also help us meet demand with materials that community members are really looking to have, and also with digital library services, particularly with the changing landscape of the publishing world and what materials will require. It will also help with increased staffing at the branch locations, Chee, Chee Lake, sorry, Clay Patel, Arnettsville, and Clinton District. And knowing that the funding is secure for the next four years is going to allow us to plan for the much-needed maintenance repairs and also expand to meet the growing community.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, I will close. Comments from the public. Do we have any grants? Ms. Colleen Kuhn.
I do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have the grant contract for the VOCA grant. We were awarded $107,666. I have a resolution. The Commission of Montague County met on Wednesday, October 30th, 2018, with a quorum, presented, passed the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Thomas C. Blum, President of the Montague County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into a contractual agreement with the Division of Justice and Community Services to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to the provisions of the Victims of Crime Act Grant Program. So I have the grant contract for you to sign, the standard conditions and assurances, the federal standard conditions and assurances, the equal employment opportunity plan, and the lobbying.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I wonder how many trees were killed for this? Great. Okay, we're now at correspondence. Response from Tom Ammon, Steptoe and Johnson, regarding request from the Town of Star City for modification to the Star City Tiff District Project Plan. If you want to just give a summarization, would be great.
Yes, so if you remember, a few weeks ago, Star City had submitted a packet of information. They have asked that the Commission consider modifications to their project plan for the Star City Tiff District. So you all referred that to Tom Ammon, Steptoe and Johnson, who is our bond counsel. He has responded. He is satisfied with the information that they have provided and the work that they have done, and has said that the next step would be to set up a meeting between the Commission, Bond Counsel, and the Town of Star City officials, so...
So I move that we go ahead and move forward and set up that meeting so that we can move this forward.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Letter received from Clay Patel Public Service District Board Members regarding possible Morgantown Utility Board rate increase.
It's quite lengthy.
Yeah, if you could just want to just hit probably the first and last, just, the concept's really simple.
We're contacting you regarding the new 30-inch water line that MUB needs to install in order to have an auxiliary water source in case of an emergency. If everything is listed in the Dominion Post is correct, then we find the demands of the city of Morgantown and Bow Park to MUB beyond ridiculous. Obviously, there's no way from, there is no way MUB can sign off on such concessions. Then it talks about the rate increase, that it would go from 6.43 to a total of 8.54. I guess that means million? Yeah, 6.43 million to 8.54 million because of the unreasonable demands of the city of Morgantown and Bow Park. And it just talks about the, what effect that would have on their customers.
On their customers.
So CB PSD will automatically be forced to pass along any increase that MUB has, which I would assume would go with all of the PSDs.
Yes.
We are asking that the Mon County Commission please support the CB PSD and possibly, and probably all of the other satellite systems that MUB sells in any manner they can.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and we've received the September 2019 Financial Performance Report from Mountain Line Transit Authority. Okay. Is there any other correspondence?
Yeah, we also have the Bow Park first quarter levy spending reports for their levy money. And then also, the Commission received a message yesterday from WVU President Dr. Gordon Gee. Says, "Gentlemen, with the opening of the Aquatic Center, I would truly be remiss if I did not drop you a note of thanks for all your help and support to make what I can assure you will be a wonderful addition to the university and to the county, as well as the city. I feel truly blessed to have Commissioners who are forward-thinking and understand the value of partnership. Please know of my respect and very best wishes." And of course, this was regarding the Aquatic Center.
Great. Appreciate that. Okay, under new business, we have consideration to approve appointment to the Clay Patel Public Service District. We had a name.
Miss unfinished business.
I'm sorry, what?
Unfinished business. Unfinished business.
Oh. Do we have unfinished business?
No.
Oh, okay, I didn't think, okay. Under new business, consideration to approve appointment to the Clay Patel Public Service District.
Dave Segal has been a member of the board for quite some time. His term will expire on October 31st tomorrow. And he wants to be reappointed. So they've asked, we've advertised and haven't received any applicants.
Move for approval?
Second.
Problem move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider for approval requisition number 27 for the University Town Center EODD. Special District Excise Tax Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bond Series 2017 Administrative Expense Fund.
This requisition is for $1,128.75, and that fund, those funds will be paid to MuniCap for their services.
Move for approval?
Second.
Problem move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider approval requisition number seven for the University Town Series 2016 Tiff Administrative Expense Fund.
This is for $2,000, and it's for trustee fees to be paid to United Bank, who is the trustee for the bonds.
Move for approval?
Second.
Problem move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now the exciting news, announcement of scheduled dates for excess levy request for 2020 election cycle, if we could have a motion and discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve the placement of any excess levy request on the 2020 primary ballot. And after discussion, we'll provide some dates.
Okay.
Second.
Problem move in second. Would you, let's have any discussion?
Yeah. The election, and these are the dates, and we had, I appreciate the groups coming in. There's one group that's not here, that has a current levy. It's the fire group.
Actually, Roger is here.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if he's representing them. Are you representing the fireman?
Yeah, if you would like, can I move to suspend the rules to let them? Since, I apologize, yeah, come on down. Yes.
I apologize, I wasn't sure that you wanted me to come forward and speak to you.
Yes.
But the Firemen's Association would certainly love to have the opportunity to renew their excess levy in 2020. Looking forward to the current levy being expiring in 2021. We'd like to continue those funds, and they are doing a wonderful amount of benefit out there for the fire departments, the hazmat team, and the brushfire team. Without that money, a lot of the things that are requirements for us now would not be able to be achieved. Replacing bunker gear, SCVAs, fire hose, all those things are on a timeline now with the International Fire Protection Association. So those things are things that come out of pocket that we were not, do not have the income base to continue. With that, we certainly appreciate you supporting the continuation of that levy and putting it on the 2020 ballot.
Thank you. Thank you for coming too.
So back to the actual schedule, and I did run this by the clerk's office to make sure that everything would work. So we had all the groups come into a work session last week. Initially, when we were starting talking about the extension of the current levies, from appearance, the date that made the most sense was the November general election being eight months away from the expiration of these levies. We did hear some concerns, and I asked Mr. Bruffy and his group to come in and share those concerns with us. And ultimately, it's these individuals that receive the money that, you know, had a concern and would like more time for planning purposes in case the levy would fail. So we, there was no reason one way or the other, other than one's 14 months out and one's eight months out. So we agree via this motion to move those dates. The election is May 12th, 2020. Per carry, the absentee balance must be mailed by May, or I'm sorry, March 29th. So the absolute deadline that we have to have something to carry, which is in statute, is 70 days out, and that would be the 3rd of March. So we have set the last possible date for inclusion on our agenda for a vote, 2/26. Preferred date would be 2/19 or sooner. And then the last date so that we have time to look at it before we actually discuss it in a public meeting, I mean, have time to look at it in a work session before we vote on it in a public meeting, is February 12th, 2019.
Right.
2020.
I'm sorry, 2020. All those dates are 2020.
Could you also clarify, because it might be a little confusing, what we also discussed, which they agreed to, was we were looking at five years or four years. Why we moved it to four years?
I'll have to amend my, I'll have to amend my motion. Let's finish this one, and then we'll do another motion. So as it is now, the motion on the table is to change to the primary cycle, which would be all the dates that would be required to get us to have the ballots printed in time, in time for the May 12th election.
Yes. So, any other discussion?
Just, I see the reasoning behind this as the availability of the time allowed in case there is a close negative vote against a particular levy. No other reason?
And the other reason that they brought up was because of budgets. It'd be a lot easier to do it in the budget time, because if it fell through, then we had to modify the budget immediately. So that was going to be very difficult.
And especially with the transit levy, there's a number of public meetings. If you're going to have a change in service, a reduction in service, they have to have public meetings. And those all have to, there's a notification process that's pretty lengthy, so this just gives them more planning time. So that's the first portion.
Okay, so it's been problem move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now there's a part two.
You're.
I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry. Did you second?
Yeah, he had second.
He'd already been second.
He'd already seconded, that's why we had discussion.
Okay.
The second part is I move that we approve that the levies that are coming up for renewal be on a four-year cycle, so we don't go through this problem in future years.
Yes, second.
Problem moved in second. And again, they also, when discussing with us, they also agreed, the groups, that they thought that was a better, more logical process. So then we always have it in the process if it happens to come up with a levy.
Yeah, and just so we're perfectly clear, that's the will of this commission to have this next round. Somebody could change that in the future. But for the next election cycle is our wish that these be on a four-year cycle. So they'll also have that planning opportunity four years from now.
Right.
For instance, the school levy that comes up, it comes up, it expires in July or June of 2022. And there'll be no, like, they'll have to vote on the primary in May for, so they, they're going to have to, and I've already pointed that out to the school board, that you're going to have something come up on a primary ballot, and it's, you're already going to be in your budget. Your budget's already going to be essentially approved by then. So they're either going to have to request a special election or live with that small risky window. So I don't know how that's going to happen, but we'll have a discussion with the school board regarding that. But putting these on a four-year cycle will alleviate that problem for us.
Right.
Because we went on five next, the next time we'd have.
We have had to have a new election.
We'd have the same issue where we'd have, like last time, where the levies were approved in May, and they went into effect in July. So we had some concerns about budgets.
So it's been problem move in second to move it from five to four years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes, good. Any other new business?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Do you have any reports from elected officials? I see someone moving. See, you hide behind that post, that's.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, that's all right. You should be a teacher.
Good morning.
Morning.
I would like to present, on behalf of the sheriff, we have an emergency suspension from the sale. This was just brought to our attention by the assessor's office as to the location of a property, whether it's in Montague County or Preston County. So they have requested that we suspend that fully sale. And so we're just letting you know that it will be suspended until it's sorted out between the two assessor's offices.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Do we need to put that in the record?
Please, yes.
We've accepted.
I just need you to accept.
No, but, okay, we've accepted it. Okay.
And also, just a reminder that our tax lien sale is Monday, November 4th, here in the county commission chambers. There was a misprint in the newspaper as to the location. Not the newspaper's fault, by the way, but it, so I'm asking if we could include that, that it would, will be here in the commission office at 9:00 AM on Monday. Right now, we have 1,820 properties that have not been paid. So we're hoping that a lot of people will come in and pay between now and Friday. The last day to pay is Friday, November 1st, and certified funds by 5:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other elected officials? Reports from county commissioners? Sean?
Since our last meeting, last Thursday afternoon, I had a meeting with the map director, Russ Rogerson. It was a very productive meeting. It's kind of, now that Russ has been on the job for a couple months, kind of getting his opinion on things and areas where he could need the commission's help moving forward. But I think he's doing a great job, and I'm looking forward to working more closely with him. On Friday, we had our normal extension building walkthrough, as we do every other Friday. Monday, we had a commission fiduciary discussion, as I kind of alluded to earlier. And then Wednesday, we had our extension building meeting. And then yesterday afternoon, I had a meeting with the president of the Board of Health and W. Medicine, just continuing conversation about possible future opportunities. Today, we have a regular meeting, and at the end of the day, I have a meeting at Myland Park with Coach Ellis of, he coaches Suncrest Cross Country. And Coach Ellis wanted to see the cross-country course at Myland Park and provide some input. And I'd be remiss, last week was the end of the cross-country season, and I know I'm playing favorites because Coach Ellis coaches my daughter's team at Suncrest. But Coach Ellis is a gem to this whole county. There are people from other teams that come up to me and say, "Your coach is so wonderful," because he goes to these events, and there's 800, 900 kids. And they all recognize him, and they all look up to him and listen to him, and he's encouraging to all of them. So the county really needs to know what a gem we have in him. And he's been doing this for, every year, the number changes as far as how many years he's been coaching. But somehow, I hope that he continues forever, because he's a wonderful gem. But anyhow, I kind of got off subject. Tomorrow, or Thursday, I had a, or actually, yesterday, I had a phone call for Juma, my Juma Committee, and then tomorrow I have a Juma Committee meeting. We're trying to finalize the, just the terms and conditions of our agreement and the joint use management of the Myland Park aquatic facility, aquatic and tract facility. So we're just trying to, and there aren't a lot of stumbling blocks, it's just kind of getting the last couple things over the hurdle. Friday, we have the Aquatic Center grand opening, and then our extension building walkthrough. And I warn everybody that this weekend is daylight savings, please don't forget. And lastly, I want to appreciate David, the library group, Ella. I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and we're happy that we can work with you to put your levy request forward, because people, and I'm glad that you're regularly putting out information regarding what you're doing with the dollars that are currently been allocated, because you're doing some wonderful things, and I hope these things get approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. As Sean mentioned, Friday was our weekly walkthrough, and at the Monday, the scheduled work session here in commission. That evening, I did have a 4-H camp board meeting. Tuesday, again, our weekly meeting on the 4-H and Extension Center. And tomorrow, apparently, is going to be Halloween. Please be safe, whether you're walking or driving. Friday, we will be in attendance at the formal opening of the Aquatic Center, the new Aquatic Center at Myland Park, followed for, by, again, by another walkthrough of the 4-H and Extension Center. And lastly, I would like to report that I received a message, a response this morning from the state DOH. Mr. White and Mr. Reston have issued an invitation for us to meet in Charleston. This is to begin to resolve the issues concerning our questions on the roads in Montague County as well as north central West Virginia. So I'm certain that we will seek dates, Renetta, so that we can present to them and find what times all of us may be able to go down to Charleston and begin to meet face to face rather than squeak or squawk at one another. Thank you.
Okay, I also want to say that I did also receive a response to my email. And rather than make any more comments, I will refer to Commissioner Hawkins' letter that we go down and meet with them, and I think let's go in that direction. Second, I want to thank those individuals here who are representing the levy. I think it was real important when people understand about how the county commission works. We had a work session, we had first planned to put it on the regular election, and clearly the individuals came and made an excellent response on why we should consider it in the primary, which we had not realized. And the system works. I really want to thank you, and I wish you the best of luck. And also, I appreciate Roger also for showing up, because all four groups are integral part of the county. I do want to say that I was fortunate that I went to the open house representing the county at the Myland Park Athletic Swimming Complex. I am thrilled to say that it was amazing, unbelievable. I think I had as good a time as the kids. I did go, I did make a promise six years ago that I would go the first day and swim in my suit and coat, and I did. And it appeared that the children loved it because they kept grabbing me and going down the slides with them. So I again want to say it was enormously successful, and I look forward to that being a major part of our community. Last night, I represented the county at the city council meeting for the pedestrian group, and we explained the three areas that we had already gone and put out some safety lights. And we're now working on a situation on Patterson Drive, which is going to be key, because that was where the two individuals were hurt. And let's see. And finally, I do want to say I did receive confirmation from Mr. Burb White that supposedly they have put out the bid, and the lights will be finally addressed on Mon Boulevard, and they're hoping to do something in the interim because of how long this takes. So again, hopefully that will be rectified.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Problem move in second. We be gone.